Wait a minute, I can find it on my computer. You could probably play it, your band could play it.
And servers don't lie. I call this Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting Work Session to Order. This evening, Don Mayhew is excused and Matt Schulte will be here shortly. April, will you call the roll, please? Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Momgaard?
Here.
In the back of the room, the Open Meetings Act is posted. We will go ahead and begin with Dr. Standish with the preliminary budget, and I will let her proceed.
Great. Good evening. My name is Liz Standish. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Business Affairs, and this is our second work session in our budget development process. We actually moved from a preliminary budget to what is now a proposed budget. We also continue to refine the general fund budget, but tonight we also talk about all funds. And this year, we did talk about the building funds slightly in our previous work session because we knew we wanted to create some public awareness and we were making a change there that hadn't been made since about 2007, 2008. One of the backdrops that we like to keep in mind is that prior to 2013 through 2014, we had revenue that was not keeping pace with our growth in student population. And during that time, there were expenditures that were placed on hold. There were some of the district's support structures that were very limited, and we had increase in class sizes. During 2013, 2014, state aid began to recover, and along with the housing market. And since then, the focus has been on class sizes, restoring district capacity. In 1415 and 1516, a big item was investing in technology. 1617, we began startups and opening of new schools that we're very excited about. And then the 1617 budget, we also have an investment in early childhood education. So this is part of the process where we're now in a proposed budget for the community. We do have our second work session this evening that will be followed by a public forum at 7 o'clock at Goodrich Middle School. Then our next layer in the process is to have the formal published hearing. So we would publish then by August 2nd, and then August 9th, we would have our formal public hearing and begin the budget adoption process. One thing to keep in mind is the board, did I skip a slide? I think I did. So we are looking at traditionally the funding sources for the school district, and property taxes still continues to be a majority funding stream for the school district. This has declined as state aid has increased to recognize our student growth. We are estimating a property tax rate that is slightly below the 1516 property tax rate. The board gave us a parameter for the bond fund during the 14 bond election to keep the levy within existing levy. And so we've been able to structure the debt to deliver on that promise. We are also looking at a shift from the general fund to the building fund, and we'll highlight that one more time tonight at this work session. When we look at the proposed budget of expenditures, you can see that it is predominantly made up of staff. About 87% of our budget is staffing. So you can see as you walk through classified administrative and certificated staff salaries, that's about 87% of our budget. And then the other benchmark we like to keep when we're looking at the global proposed budget is the focused on instruction and direct services to students. So about 83% of our budget would be focusing on direct services to students, special education, student services, and regular education. We spent quite a bit of time on this section at our first work session where we really dig into the details of the changes. So when you look at 1516 and you move it forward to 1617, what are some of the adjustments or changes that we're proposing in the budget? And we have those highlighted at a higher level this evening because once again, we'll want to move on to the other funds. But just walking through them at a high level, negotiations and salaries, 7.8%. This is where you would find your package increases. We do have some funding to address classified groups where we're having trouble with retention and recruitment. We have school staffing that would include regular education, special education, academic interventions, ELL. We also have special education increases within the school-based staffing. There's some athletics investments, unified sports, something that's been covered in the newspaper, and increasing our cross-country coaching staff. The next main category would be opening new schools. We're very excited. We'll be opening Y Song Elementary. We also have a startup budget for more middle school. Nuremberger is another place where we'll be starting up. So that's marking some great progress on the 14 bond issue and opening new schools. Technology continues to be a focus. The main focus this year is staffing our schools with the rollout of Chromebooks with instructional technology coaches to help make sure we're fully utilizing the Chromebooks in the classroom. So that staffing makes up a good portion of the technology investment. We also have an investment in early childhood. Over the course of this last year, we had conversations with our partner who housed the Head Start funding, Community Action. And there we're looking at new regs, new federal legs that would substantially change our program, moving it to a full-day, full-year program, and regulation changes. In order to do that with our current capacity, we would have needed to reduce the number of seats and therefore have less access to early childhood within the school system. So this is investing in early childhood, maintaining the half-day program within Lincoln Public Schools, and then our partner is able to house new programming, which is a net gain of increase in access to early childhood throughout the community. That brings us to a total increase of 22.6 million. And then we talked about the shift to the building fund. When you look at the big picture general fund budget, you can see that we're proposing a budget of 402 million. This would utilize 5.4 million from our cash flow, keeping in mind that we added 10.4 million to cash flow last year. So we added to cash flow in 1516. 1617, we would be drawing down from cash flow. This is looking at a general fund levy of $1.45 with that half a penny shift to the building fund. One of the reasons we're always looking at cash flow, and cash flow is always a part of the conversation in Lincoln Public Schools, is we're managing the swings in property value. The full revalue reassessment happens once every three years. That's when market corrections are made. So as market prices increase or decrease, that correction is represented. And this is a graph that we looked at about a year ago just to demonstrate the three-year cycle and the fact that we always have to have that longer view of budget development so that we're not making large investments in the increase year that we can't sustain into the future. And that's why you are using cash flow, building it one year, drawing it in the next two years. I will say this is very much an indication of managing growth. When I think about our school district budget, I think about how do we manage to fund growth, to maintain class sizes, to maintain our investment, to maintain the quality that we have while we're growing so rapidly. And one note I should make is we do plan to grow our estimate as an additional 950 students next year. So that growth in the community that comes at different points happens incrementally every year, so you have to manage it over a three-year lens. We talked briefly about the shift to the building fund. When you think about the facilities of the school district, where we have 68 facilities, 7.5 million square feet, looking at that and looking at the revenue to support that investment and to maintain that investment. We have the building fund where we can have site acquisition improvements of sites. We can also purchase facilities. We can also have construction within existing sites or new sites. Qualified capital purpose fund was limited this last legislative session. It was decreased from 5.2 cents to 3 cents. So that is a little bit more limited revenue stream now to fund facilities. We have the depreciation fund where we could buy large equipment that you save for over time. And the general fund predominantly would be maintenance. So one example that's simple that we think about between the two is putting on a new roof would be a building fund activity. Repairing an existing roof would be maintenance, and it would be a general fund activity. So when we think about the building fund, some of the things we've talked about in the planning committee, some of the things we've talked about with this investment is maintaining the position within the city. And so as the city grows, are we maintaining that vibrant position that Lincoln Public Schools has always had where we have sites in developments that we can work with? So we have an asset that's at the table as the development is happening. We've also talked about modifications to existing facilities. North Star is an example of that. There are some modifications going on this summer. Some of those are moving walls, more construction in nature, ineligible for the building fund. And one thing we always want to do is invest in our existing facilities. So if there are building fund-type examples in our existing facilities, replacing an entire roof as opposed to repairing it, we need to make sure we have a vibrant way of doing that as well. I will add that when we're looking at sites throughout the city, the land we currently own is a very valuable asset. So it could be part of a trade, it could be sold. So the revenue streams that can support this work go beyond just the tax levy. But the tax levy at just below $1 million is something we're proposing in this budget. When we look across all funds, and this slide has quite a bit of numbers on it with a lot of columns and tables, but it walks you through the concept of our general fund. You can follow the third column of the 402 million. Federal funds are a component of that, and special grant funds are a component of that. You also can see where we are for our bond fund and our building fund. Then you can walk through, and you can see the Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund, Student Activity Accounts, the Bond Debt Fund, Depreciation, and walk through. The ESU is another component that we add at this work session, and we will spend a few slides just talking about the few adjustments that we have within the ESU budget. It is important to know that it's about a $13.5 million budget. So here's some of the considerations that we have for both the co-op fund and the ESU fund. The co-op fund is where we would have the function of the district and the ESU blended together. And Sherry can help us with the loops as we talk through this if we have any questions about that. But there are moments when you have a contracted service in one fund and you have the expenses in another. It could be tied to an interlocal act with another government entity. Those are some of the reasons you use the cooperative fund. So one key investment in the co-op fund would be professional development. So we're investing in an additional $115,000 for professional development related to technology. We also have an additional investment for our continuing education. This would be where LPS teaches classes to our own certificated staff for certificate and endorsement areas that the district's highly interested in. We also have professional development specifically for school improvement. So this would fall under that school improvement lens, the $160,000. So there is an additional investment in professional development. We also have media services. We are doing a bit of a refresh of some of our media fixtures and furnishings. So Mary Ryman will kind of lead the charge of looking through the libraries and seeing where we maybe need to do a refresh of some of our furnishing there and some additional contracted services. And we also maintain a district-wide movie license for schools. That interchanges with the ESU fund because sometimes they work together. But in the ESU fund, a function of the ESU is county youth services. Everyone may have noticed there's a slight reduction there in the number of students being served. And so there is a slight reduction in staffing and a bit of reconfiguration. We looked at our heritage school budget, and we increased that very slightly. This is where you see that interchange. We budgeted for the email filter on the district side. It's also a payment then over to the ESU where you would need the expenditure would be housed. Professional development, we talked about that before on the previous page, where you have some interchange there. Media services, we have a contract in the co-op fund. And then we have our early services coordination. I know there was recently an update in the student learning community about that function, but these are adjustments. We had a bit of a contingency in there when we first started it because it was brand-new. We did not know how many staff we would need and what the caseloads would be. So this adjustment is really just removing the contingency and getting the staffing about where we think it needs to be. Then we have a decrease or an increase of $200,000 when you look at the ESU fund. That walks us through the changes for the co-op fund, the changes for the ESU fund, where we stand now for the general fund. And I think now we'd be happy to answer questions or take comments from board members or have whatever discussion you would like. So, Mrs. Duncan.
Good. Well, thank you, Liz, for your presentation and the work that you and your staff have put into this year's budget. Now I'd like to open this up to questions from the board. I do ask that the board members limit their questions to one topic at a time, please, so that each of us can weigh in on each question and so that we can move on to each question all at the same time. So let's just ask one question at a time so we're all not crazy about this. So Barb, you're first.
Thank you. Overall, I'm very supportive of this budget. I think it's a very effective budget that aligns resources to our strategic plan and our various goals. But I do have one particular question that I had mentioned earlier when I unfortunately cannot join you on the first budget session, work session. And that is about the early childhood initiative that we're engaging in. And so I looked at it closer, and I looked at the research that is driving the changes federally with Head Start, pushing Head Start to full-day, full-year care. And the evidence, many studies, there's one that was called the Head Start Impact Study. There have been a number of them that have been done. And what has been shown is that Head Start, when it's a half-day program, does not provide very many gains for the students. The gains evaporate quickly. The half-day program is not enough time for teachers and other staff to engage with little ones and the many different things that they need to learn and become prepared for kindergarten. A number of demonstration projects have been done, and it's been found that full-day, full-year, early childhood provides, programming provides the same kinds of gains that you would find in the private sector, that those of the middle class would go and put their children into an early childhood educational program, that the gains are more substantial, they are long-lasting, and it levels the playing field between those who are children from low-income families and other deprived backgrounds. So I have a question here to pose to our staff and to our board. I think we need to go and make our budgeting decisions based on evidence base. And that evidence base doesn't always just come from us. It comes from outside sources. And in this case, it's been shown over several decades that full-year, full-day care and education is much more effective. And one of the studies that I read, it's also said it's just a common sense observation, in fact. And if we reflect on our own careers and our own lives, we know that we usually don't work half-days. And those children who go to Head Start, to early Head Start services, they have parents who are being required by the state often in order to be able to get the benefits that they need to go and ensure proper care of their children, that they go out and they seek full-time work, or that they work a full-time job, or that they go to college or some kind of job training on a full-time basis. To go and have a three-and-a-half-hour day or a four-hour day is to cut up that day and make it difficult for those parents to succeed and be able to provide for their children. I think that we need to question if it's a good idea to go and do just half-day. I think that it's a well-meaning idea to go and retain the number of seats. But if the evidence tells us that the programming isn't as effective as it should be, then we're not really providing service to our most vulnerable children, our most vulnerable families in the way that would actually make a difference. And when we take taxpayer resources, we should make sure that we're investing in programming that makes a difference. And so I would like for us to ask for more information from staff and to reflect on whether or not it's a really good idea to go and continue with half-day programming when there is so much evidence that tells us that full-day programming, full-year, is what strengthens low-income vulnerable families.
Okay. Dr. Standish?
And my role tonight is just to kind of articulate the logic that went into the budget that's before you. So I can share a little bit of that. The conversations over the last year would be that our early childhood program had a blended funding stream that included Head Start, and it included the inclusive model, so classrooms were held to that Head Start standard across the board. So you would have a genuine mix of children in each classroom. You weren't creating a Head Start classroom and a Title I classroom and a general fund-funded classroom. And so when we looked at the new regulations for Head Start, the amount of change that would be required with the full-day, full-year, and the regulations, the tough choice before the board and before the district was if we moved to those regulations, we would, with, you know, similar classrooms, with similar funding sources, we would significantly lose access or seats. And so that was the tough choice that I think went into this budget consideration. We do know we have a lengthy 600-plus waitlist. So I think at that point, what prevailed in this budget was the concept of access. But I think a conversation about format and things like that is always welcome. And I know the director of early child is listening in tonight, and I think we're open to wherever the board would want to go in the future. But that is the logic that went into this budget development.
Annie?
I think, Barb, you raised some really good points, and we do want to make our decisions based on evidence. And I think you're right, it is common sense that a full-day experience for a given child would be better than a half-day experience. But I think what, I just found my notes here from our student learning committee last July when we discussed this, or at least one of the times we discussed this. And it's not a matter of serving 1,200 students and having a full day versus serving 1,200 students for a half-day. We don't have the capacity, we don't have the physical space to serve all of those students for a full day. So what we're really talking about, if we went to a full day, we would be taking 600 students and saying, "You're not going to have preschool with us." And so I think what we look at is it's better to serve 1,200 students. When you have over 500 or 600 students on a waiting list, it is better to serve 1,200 students in a half-day program than to serve only 600 students in a full-day program. And I think that's the logic behind what we were trying to accomplish and what we discussed, or at least how I recall that we discussed it in student learning. The other question I'd like to have is just to clarify, the programs for this coming year are not Head Start programs. Is that correct?
Correct. This would be, the district would no longer be receiving Head Start funds, and the replacement would be general fund. One advantage of having it be general fund moving forward is that then I think the district could have the conversation about what's the right fit, what makes sense, without having the Head Start regulations as quality as they are. But we could have that conversation about what's the right mix for our student population.
And I do think that that's another very important point, that the research that you've seen that is about half-day Head Start versus a full-day Head Start, to some extent, is probably not relevant when we talk about a half-day program that does not have to comply with all of the Head Start requirements. We can help develop the requirements that'll be beneficial to students for Lincoln.
Kathy next, and then Barb.
I've been, I mean, because you brought this up, I think a couple of weeks ago you talked about it. So I got through my old files because I'm a pack rat. And I can go back to 2001 on stuff, but this is from 2005, '06. And we started this prep in 2003 for all-day kindergarten. And it took us four years to implement all-day kindergarten in LPS. So I wanted to figure out, if we're going to implement all-day pre-K, I don't want to just throw money at it. I want to do the same thing we did when we did all-day kindergarten. So I have a couple of questions for Dr. Standish. When we moved to all-day kindergarten, the state aid increased amounts because students went from a half-day to a full-day, correct?
Correct.
So we would have to front-load, if we'd put all the kids in LPS that needed a half-day program or needed a full-day program, we would have to front-load that money the first year, correct? Because the state aid is always a year behind.
Correct.
So the impediment for us is not that we couldn't come up with the funding. It's physical space, correct? The biggest impediment?
It could be a combination of the two, but physical space, we have very few. We do have a handful of classrooms that would be AM-only or PM-only. So you could stretch that classroom and use that classroom a full day. Most of our classrooms have an AM section and a PM section. So if you pulled that to a full day, you'd have to find a second classroom to serve the same students. So there is definite facility impacts for if you want to serve the same number of kids in a full-day program as you do in the half-day program, just like they were. they were with the kindergarten full-day implementation.
Because I was just as passionate about all-day kindergarten as Barb is about all-day pre-K. So in the Facility Advisory Committee, they went through it, and they made the recommendation that we move to all-day kindergarten. We had three task forces that came to the same conclusion because we could fund the teachers, but we couldn't fund the space. So before we throw more money at it, I'd want to know how many seats, because I don't like 600 kids on a waiting list. I want, if I'm going to serve them, I want to serve them all. I think that that's the most important thing we can do. What would it take to serve every pre-K child? And no, I don't expect you to answer it while you're standing there. And I mean, how many, how many spaces would we need to build? If it's 1,200, 1,800 kids, is that what I'm understanding? Where you serve 1,200, we have 600 on a waitlist? Am I close?
Probably. I think we'd want to have a community-wide conversation, because this investment is then also creating a new investment in the community. And so there are new early childhood, quality early childhood seats opening this fall as a result of this investment. So I think we'd want to have a community-wide conversation about, you know, here's the role Lincoln Public Schools can play, here's where families are finding their need and the right fit, and what makes sense as far as serving families and using facilities, not just within our schools, but within the community as well.
See, I would want to build something to put somebody else, I'll use out-of-business because I can't think of a better word right now, because if they have a quality program going. And I know we have the EduCare that was built on Belmont, and my understanding is that's still going to operate, and they have 160 capacity or 160 students in EduCare right now, which is an all-day, year-round program, correct? So that kind of gives us a template or a look at what it would take for space. So before we adopt the budget, could you just kind of give me an idea of how many classrooms we would have available and how many we would need? When I looked back at the 2005, '06, we needed to add 10 classrooms, or 10 buildings had to add capacity in the bond issue to facilitate or accommodate all-day kindergarten. So then the next question comes, we're growing 1,000 kids a year. We were only growing 300 kids a year in 2004, '05. Are we going to have that capacity as well? We've done a half-day program. I'd also like somewhere in the next couple of weeks, maybe an email or something on, what is the success of our, of our pre-K? Because I like studies from other places, but I like home studies better. I want to know what's happening in our programs. So that would be, that would be something that would help us to understand, what are we teaching? What's a typical day for a three- or four-year-old? Who sometimes I can't stand to have more than four hours, so I'm going to do it for eight. I mean, that, four-year-olds are pretty active. Three-year-olds are even more active. So I'd like to know what that program would look like.
I think we could provide a summary for the board that talks about our four-year-old half-day program, what that entails, how many classrooms we're in, how many of those classrooms are AM and PM utilization, and just put together some nice summary facts to get out to the board members to give us a baseline to work from.
Because I'm not opposed to this. But if we're going to do it, I want to make sure it's longstanding. I want to make sure we put all the pieces to the puzzle in place, make sure the community comes along with us on the ride, and make sure parents understand, we're not trying to snatch your babies out of your arm, we're just making something available. Because it is voluntary at three and four-years-old, so.
And Barb, if you don't care, Dr. Joel had the answers to Kathy.
And mine is just an add. Just as a reminder, our community has identified early childhood as one of those three legs of the, of the community betterment stool, Prosper Lincoln. And it's really all about eliminating, completely eliminating, the waiting list for early childhood. So while, you know, I think everybody would say, a full-day experience for students with needs would be absolutely wonderful, the community's trying to address this thing at a much greater scale, because there's an awful lot of, well, our growth is bringing in more and more of those families.
Okay, right. Okay, Barb, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad that we're having the conversation. That's what I'm happy about. And I really am supportive of having a community conversation, because this, as I said in my statement the last boardwork session on the budget, this is a new territory for us, and we need to also have the support of our state and the state legislature on this. But this is a conversation that we do need. I really have to emphasize that though local evaluations are nice, in-house evaluations are nice, it's critically important that we see the value in third-party, academic-driven, scientifically-done studies, which has happened. And it did more than a comparison between half-day and full-day Head Start. It compared it to private-sector preschool and early education options. Trying to go, the goal is to bring the Head Start or publicly-funded opportunities for early childhood up to the same standards that exist for accredited, private preschool and early childhood. And that's what the studies that I refer to talk about. And so regardless of location, half-day is not very effective. Full-day is. My point is, is that if you're not going and delivering effective, meaningful service to a large portion of the population, and you're disrupting the ability for parents to pursue their self-sufficiency goals in seeking full-time employment, getting job training, things of that nature, then you're actually going and contributing to the problem of poverty and not helping. So when we do halfway measures and we say we want to eliminate a waiting list, we're serving no one in the long run, because we're not doing a good job. And that's what these studies tell us, is we're not doing a good job with half-day early childhood. It is not effective. And so I totally appreciate the need for a community-wide conversation. I know about Prosper Lincoln, as we all do, and I'm so very glad that you brought that up, Dr. Joel, because I think this is the time for our community to start having this conversation. And I want to remind us as a board that we have very few powers as a board, and they're only when we're in session, not individually. But, and one of those powers is our budget. What do we fund? And we have to ask that question when we see major changes, which I believe this is a major change in early childhood. We need to ask those hard questions. Is this the investment we want to make? Is this an effective investment? I would prefer to serve a smaller number of children and families effectively and go to the larger community and to the state and say, we have a need here. This need, we have this waiting list here. This need, it is real, and it's unfair. And, and work together towards going and funding this. But we don't do that until we start saying, hey, wait a minute. This is not based on the best practices or the evidence that we have available to us. So I'm really, really glad that the comments I've heard so far express some interest and enthusiasm. So thank you.
Okay, Matt, and then Kathy.
I guess to say that half-day preschool is not effective is, in my mind, a gross overstatement.
Yes.
Because we have, we have invested a lot in this over the, over the time and seen a lot of resource. I think if you look, some of the research I've looked at shows that the gains are great, but they're only short-term gains, that within a year or a year and a half, those gains are lost by moving to full-day. I have some concerns about adding this expenditure, but I do also see the advantage of it for kids in, at the preschool age. And I think right now, half-day is definitely the only way to go for us.
Kathy?
But we're currently serving 1,200 kids in a half-day program, and we have been for decades, or at least as long as I've been on the board, right?
I can't say, I'm not sure how many years we have, but I'm assuming a while. I'm getting, I mean, you had nods that it's been a while, so.
Well, my niece is 21, and she was in it. So it's been a while.
So that counts as a decade.
So to say it's not a good investment would be, would be an inaccuracy. I just pulled up the National Institute for Early Education Research, and I know we're talking about the budget, but it says kids in a half-day are at 90% of the norm. And, you know, you have a lot of kids that are at 40, 50%. So I would compare that to the kids who, when you say, well, let's not do anything for those, let's only have full-day, and take 600 out, that's 600 kids who get nothing. So are they going to be at that 90%? Are they going to be at 50% because they, they weren't introduced to it? Is, is nothing really better? That's like saying, your mom can go out of the house for half-day and only cook one meal a day, and, and it's okay. Or she cooks three meals. You either get one meal or you get three meals. I don't think, I don't think that works. Education is an all-day process, but it doesn't happen just in school. Education happens when the teachers interact with the parents, they give them things to do at home. The half-day program that I've seen here, which I think is fairly robust, encourages so much more that parents weren't, a lot of kids never were read to. And I know that sounds foreign to us, but they didn't have their own book. If you go into Read Across America and watch, when you give those children their own book, they don't own their own books at their houses. So for me, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the expenditure, because we're already doing it, we're funding it differently. I think that's the real question here, is are we okay with funding it differently? I still believe there's a place in the community for the Head Start process. I believe that there's a place for EduCare, and we are one Lincoln. We're not, we're not three different Lincolns. We're all going to work together. That's what makes Lincoln such a great place.
Annie?
Would you be willing to share the resources that you found?
Oh, yes, there are many. And I would hope that one of the things we could get out of this conversation is to go and ask staff to provide for us a overview of some of that information and research that's easily available through the NOFA that was issued, which means Notice of Funding Opportunity or Announcement from the Feds for the funding for Head Start at full-day, full-year. And they reference all of the different evidence in that, and that's an easy place to start at. And I think that we need to do more than a cursory glance at it, because the differences between half-day and full-day are significant. But then we have to also ask that larger question of what happens to families in disrupting their day. And I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, because I also took, took a little bit of time to try to do some research, not cursory and top. And I know I don't have the, some of the background that you have for searching. What I really found, very top of the drawer kind of found, was that it was not only, it was that there's some issues with the Head Start programs, and that not just the amount of time in the programs, but it was the manner in which Head Start itself is being operated. That's a little bit that I found out. Love Head Start, but that is why part of the issues were coming up. And as I see it, what we are doing, we're making, we're continuing an investment, as well as we are also opening up the door and allowing the community to have the investment to do a better Head Start program, full-day as perhaps it needs to be for at least 160, 170 kids who will be going through the money that was basically released by us, but by, so that the growth could happen within the community itself. Now, as I see it, that is not stopping the, some of the steps that perhaps we are responsible in looking at and taking serious looks at, and issues of poverty in our city, is taking an active partnership with it and creating more accessibility. I'm not disagreeing that we need to take a very good look at how our, our program is run, and what is happening in it, and are we meeting the needs, and are we keeping the door open, and not only open, but inviting and so forth, and making it for the community that, and the individuals that are in need. But that is my understanding of partly what this step does, is that it really actually opens another door in the community of more opportunity for, for more children. We have 600 on our waiting list, but CAP's ability, if they get the Head Start funds, has the ability, I understand it, to have about 160 more openings than we've ever had, and full-day openings, to do exactly as it was noted that the Head Start program needed to kind of step up the plate to. But I put that out there because I'd like to see the other research, just to kind of do the head-to-head kind of taking a look at the whole thing. That's kind of how I was, have read the situation with that.
Barb?
Can I appreciate that opportunity that we have, that 160 full-day, full-year? And that's a very good opportunity. I think we need to ask the larger, harder question to ourselves. Lincoln, Nebraska has a overall poverty rate of about 16%. It's increased substantially in recent years, even though overall Lincoln is booming. And when you go and you look at those stats closer and you see young families with children at five and younger, those rates skyrocket. So the need for full-day, full-year is huge. And I really have to emphasize that half-day care, whether it's in the private sector or in the public sector, is disruptive to families. I, I'm a working mom. Most of us have experienced that. And to go and support your family, I've been head of household, going and having a half-day and running around, particularly if you depended on the public transportation, or maybe just your bike, to get to and from work and drop your child off at a early childhood education opportunity is, a half-day is detrimental for you to be able to move ahead in your life, so that you can provide that stability. And so I, I, I think that we need to really see that total picture here. And, and I do appreciate that we need to have discussions and that we need to do this gradually, that change takes time. But I think that Lincoln Board of Education needs to take that on.
Okay, Annie, and I just want to remind everyone that we do have to leave here at 6:15.
Okay.
Annie, you're next.
Then I'm slightly unclear on kind of what you see, what is our mission to be doing then? I mean, is it, you know, if we can serve as 1,200 children for half-days with perhaps some inconvenience within their, having been the same kind of working mom that had to go and get her child from a half-day preschool situation, middle-class, albeit, yes. Or to, is that the fact of making this investment is not investing in the right style of early childhood education? I guess I'm a little unclear on what it is you're wanting us to be thinking through.
I would like to see us go and have full-day, full-year. I would rather go and have an effective program for a smaller number of children and help more, those families actually move out of poverty and actually make gains, than to go and create the promise of that and not deliver on what we're promising. I think it's disruptive to family life and to working parents, particularly those who do not have their own transportation, to have a half-day. I don't think it's very helpful. I think that the evidence has, over several decades, shown us that within the classroom, it doesn't make as many gains as, and Matt's right, it's not that half-day is worthless, that, I don't want to communicate that. There is value there. But we see the gains that we want when we go and we make that investment. And to go back to what Kathy said, when we, for many years, and Kathy was a great champion for this, on going and creating all-day kindergarten, we did have all-day kindergarten options in our schools, many of our schools, not all of our schools. But I think we need to look at this seriously and have this option where it's more effective.
Sooner versus, like, this year versus taking a look at it and doing it in the next, in the year?
Yes, I would prefer that, but I'm also a person who's a realist.
I'm going to stop both you gals and let Liz interject something.
What I'm hearing is reasonable next steps, and I just think this would make sense, is I know we have a wonderful team of people who works very hard to provide a very quality half-day early childhood program for four-year-olds. Let's create a snapshot document of that for the board that says, here's what we do, here's how many students we serve, here's schools they're in, here's what the facility picture looks like. I know we have great things to say about our program as well, so we want to share those with you. And I think that would serve as a great baseline knowledge for the conversation. And I know we have people in the audience that are like, this is a great conversation. You know, we love to talk about early childhood, we have lots of advocates for it, and that would be a next step. But let's get a baseline document out to you, knowing that this investment does increase full-day, full-year opportunities in the community, and it also does create an opportunity for Lincoln to then work with our partners and define a future that might look different than where we are right now. So that's what I'm hearing is some maybe appropriate next steps to the conversation tonight.
Good. I think that's what we'll go ahead, if that's okay with all of you. And then what I'm also hearing is that Barb, you have some documents that you're going to share with the board, that we can see all of those, then they will share that as well. And I just want to remind everyone, this is a snapshot of one year's budget. I think this is a conversation that we're going to have throughout the year, and that's something that we can look at next year. It's not something that we have to decide this year. We're taking small steps. Okay, let's move on to our next question. Does anyone have another question about something different? Barb?
I'm sorry.
We weren't here, so we thought you might.
I want to thank Liz. I want to thank a number of people that have answered my questions in various committees that I've served on, and the majority of my concerns, like the building fund, I'm okay with. But my last question is that we're having this technology rollout, and I see that we have rightly gone and are funding three high schools to have their media centers open and maybe possibly look at gaps for middle schools. And I really endorse staff in this board for looking at that. But I do think we need to consider having it be for all high schools, if at all possible. Because I do not believe, I've had calls from different constituents in various different parts of town, just not isolated areas, but that when LPS approaches those end-of-quarter times or end-of-semester times, that our internet carriers here in town, internet services are not as robust as they need to be, and that a lot of people get knocked off. And I've had moms call me up and say, you know, my child couldn't get on the internet to do this and this and this, to finish whatever paper it was or whatever, until midnight. And so I think that we need to open up our media centers, particularly in our high schools, because I think this is tied to our graduation rate and success in academics, to ensure that all our students have access to the internet. Because even if they haven't gotten a Chromebook that particular year, it seems like technology's just racing ahead of us, and to get most of your homework done these days, you're going to have to do research, you're going to have to be able to access that internet, regardless if you have a Chromebook handed to you. So that's my other question.
Just to clarify what is in the budget, the Finance Committee talked about this quite a bit, and where we landed and what is in this proposal is Lincoln High as a place that would be open into extended hours, potentially up through 8 o'clock, and staffing that and having that available to the community. And then Northeast, since it's another place where we'll have Chromebooks rolling out into the fall, maybe not the media center, but a location in the building because their media center is quite central to the facility. And then also looking at maybe some pilots with hotspots, Southeast would be a place that we'd maybe consider that. And then one thing that was asked for was a list of libraries, hours, other venues. And so we have staff in FM currently building a map where we can lay those with our schools. And one thing we wanted to look at, where we know we have two grade levels covered, is middle schools. So when we look at the middle schools, are there places where there's not a library that's open till 8 o'clock, and there's not one of the high schools that can service that area? So there was a desire to take a step forward, and I know that there was lots of conversation, once again, about being incremental about it. And so this is where it landed for the proposed budget that's in front of you this evening.
Kathy?
I support the addition of the hotspots, but I have heard discussion in the community that there's a long-term goal of providing better access to the internet across the entire community, and it's on the horizon close. I think we still have to prepare our kids with our stuff because we have our own network. It's not like being on Time Warner or Verizon. We have Unite, we have our own fiber, and it's fairly robust. I know it can do 40 downloads in five minutes on my computer because they do it every board meeting. So the reality is, I think that doing it in our buildings is a good idea. I do think that we need to find ways to help our kids know how to use their Chromebooks in an offline mode. I think we talked about that in the Technology Committee, correct, Lanning? That the teachers were supposed to be learning, teaching the children how to download their information so that when they got home, if they didn't have the internet, they could still do that project at home.
And that played a role in the devices that were selected as well.
Okay. I just wasn't sure that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Barb, did you want to say something?
I was going to move on to another topic.
Kayla Swade, is there anything else on this topic?
This is Duncan, one additional to Ms. Danix's comment, is there is a robust conversation in the community. It is not here and now for this fall, it is in the future. Kirk Langer's serving on a team about fiber and utilization, and there's very exciting conversations going on about what we will be able to provide students. I do understand the need for this request was students who are in our classrooms this fall. But I am happy, as a district leader, that this is a challenge we're talking about that does have a solution, it's just not a here-and-now solution. So we're very much at the table, very well represented in the conversations, and every conversation I've had with Mr. Langer has been very exciting about some of the possibilities that are being considered. So I wanted to highlight that, but I do think there still is a question about students in our schools this fall with Chromebooks and how they can function.
Good. Barb, did you have something about this as well again?
Yeah. The conversation that's happening and also the change to having more options for internet access in our community, those solutions for a community-wide solution are two years off. And my concern is that we have juniors and seniors this year across an entire community that need to get their homework done now. Now, I understand the good idea of teaching kids how to work offline, and I think that's a very laudable goal. I'm the mom of a 16-year-old, and I'll tell you, you can tell them, and you can tell them, and you can tell them, and some of that will happen, and some of it won't, and they will go and they'll wait. And I think it's, I think that if they're going to put the effort forward during those last few weeks of their quarter or their semester, that they should be able to access the internet. And we have that ability, and I don't think it's too costly for us to create a solution in the here and now for our students. With the entire possibility that in two years from now, we may not need to have this investment continue. But right now, we have a here-and-now situation. And here-and-now, we need to make sure that all our students can get to that internet and get those grades and graduate on time.
Okay, Lanning?
So a question from my colleague, assuming that the funds that we have to provide the extended media hours are limited, and we're currently looking at providing services in three of the high schools till 8:00 p.m., would you prefer to see something where we served all six of the high schools for half the time?
I think that there are other places in our budget that we can go and find this funding. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I don't recall that was that costly to begin with, to do the three high schools and the hotspots. I think that going and doing it in all the high schools is something that would be achievable without having that question.
Dr. Weber, I have a question for you. How hard would it be to hire